Good evening, everyone. The intended public notice, regular city council meeting Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 Jasper City Hall, 465 South Main Street. It is now 6:00 P.M. We will call this meeting in order. Pastor Gary will give you the last prayer.
Lord, we thank you for this day, this night, this opportunity. God, we thank you that because of you, we have the freedom to come together. God, I pray your grace would be upon us tonight. Just ask for wisdom, for direction. God, we ask that your blessing would be upon Jasper, our officials tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. We have the information section for city council. I'm going to read that, S R M P A, S E T R P C and S E T E D D. For all council members to read. Are there any departmental reports tonight? Any questions on the departmental reports? Do departments need to report anything? Moving right along. Are there any public comments? No public comments. Just understand that, meeting tonight, please understand that city council cannot discuss any presented issues, nor can it take any action on any issue at this time, except that a statement of fact, including policy, may be made if responsive to an issue. Attorney General's opinions, J C dash zero one six nine. We have items for discussion and our action. Item number one. But first, before we do this, Councilman Hildebrand has requested to speak. So Councilman Hildebrand, council does not object? Council does not object. Councilman Hildebrand, you are called. You make your statement. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And everyone, please oblige me this. I've sat silent for a while, but I have to tell you, this is my home. This is why I ran for city council, to work for the people, fight for the people, to do the right things for the right reasons, try to make the best, or better than it is. Our meetings have been an embarrassment. They've been disappointing, even sickening to me. I pray diligently every day, every night, for relief, guidance, divine intervention. And, you know, folks, any of you that think that we're doing the work of the Lord, or the will of God, or the will of the people, God ain't happy with us right now. And I don't know, I've tried everything in the world to get everybody on board. And the only way I can explain all of this mess is along these lines. Imagine the sea tide. The tide reaches high point right here. This is it. This is it. And it seems like something from here, myself included, from here to the other end, when it rolls out, it just engages everyone. And the hate, the frustration, the screaming, the hollering, the finger pointing, the use of language that's not appropriate for this setting, it's got to stop. So even though I'm jeopardizing doing my part, I'm going to put everyone on notice right now. The next time we start getting out of line, we start getting out of order, someone jumps up, stands up, points fingers, I'm packing my stuff up, I'm walking out. I'm not going to ask anyone else to do it, not going to advocate that they do it, not even going to hope they do it. And it's wrong on my part, but I can't do my job with all of that rhetoric and all that white noise and everything else, the hate, the frustrations, the screaming, the hollering. It needs to stop. So if we can not only do our work, but do it in a way that the people of Jasper, Texas will be happy of and proud of, and at the same time, maybe God would be happy with us again. And I go back to when I was nine years old, I learned something in church, a pledge. And part of that pledge was to do everything in a Christ-like manner. So going from this point forward, that's what I'm going to be doing. I'm going to roll up my mat and walk out if I need to.
Thank you very much for your confidence, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, items for discussion and our action. Consider for approval, four sets of minutes for special call, city council meeting October 2nd, 2024, regular call, city council meeting October 15th, special call, city council meeting October 21st, special call, city council meeting October 29th. Councilors, I'll read your minutes in those meetings. Can I get a motion to approve?
Approve.
We have a motion, Councilman Sample, second by Councilman Holmes. Any further discussion on these items?
I have, I have something. I have discussion. Included in these minutes is a statement that I said, that I made in the October 15th, 2024 meeting during council time. We are still doing council time, correct? We are still doing that. And I was just wanting to make sure that if we make any statement up here and it's included in the minutes, that it will be all of the council members and not just one council member, if that's going to be how we're doing this going forward. I would like to say that.
Okay. So is there something missing in the council minutes? Is something needs to be corrected?
I have nothing that needs to be corrected, but I do know that what I said, the words that I said were placed with the minutes. And I know that all of us, a lot of us have spoken during council time, and I don't see that done by any other council member. So I just want to make sure, you know, that there's equality across the board here, that all of our statements are included in the minutes, as mine are.
City Secretary will make sure that those are. Okay. Okay, all in favor of the approval of the minutes? We have a motion and a second by Councilman Holmes. All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number two. We will, at this time, we'll take item number two and item number 11 and do both at the same time in consideration for Waxman and Associates, Miss Susan Stover has something somewhere else to be, so we're going to do those both at the same time. Okay. Item number two, considered for approval, resolution of the city council authorizing the submission of a Texas C D D G program application and commitment of match funds. And item number 11, which is considered for approval, reject all bids on Sandy Creek project, Sandy Creek Bank rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll start with item number two. First of all, thank you very much for, again, hiring Waxman Incorporated to work on your grant projects with you. Wesley and I both really appreciate the opportunities to serve the city of Jasper in this capacity. We look forward to working with you on this grant. The resolution is the first step in the application process for this funding cycle. Basically, you don't have to select the actual project yet, but this is an intent to apply for grant funds. And the amount of grant funds this year, they've raised it from $500 to $750,000. And because of the size of the population of the city of Jasper, you have a 10% match, which would be $75,000. So the resolution basically gives our firm permission to submit an intent to apply for an application on behalf of the city of Jasper. These will be scored, and then February 1st, the agency will notify us if we score high enough to put in a full application, at which time we will do the final selection of the projects and we'll fill out the full application and go from there. But if we're invited to do the full application, we are for sure getting funded. So that's what this phase is. And we talked about a lot of the projects at the workshop that we had and also the two public hearings that we've had. So I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have about this process.
I just have one question for our city management. Do you have the funds that we have to input? Are we able to use those funds at this time?
We won't be able to make the match, because this actually won't be funded until the following month of year.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have. Okay, thank you, Susan. Anyone else? Thank you, Susan. Number 11.
All right, did you want to vote on number two, or do you want to vote on after I sit down?
You want to hold on, hold on? Are there two separate ones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll vote on this one first. Okay, can I get a motion to approve item number two, considered for approval, resolution? City council?
Approve.
Councilman Sample vote, I mean, a motion to approve? Second by Councilman Holmes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any further discussion on this matter? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 11, Susan.
Thank you. This is regarding the Sandy Creek Drainage Project, the rock that's been done from 96 going north on Sandy Creek. After we finished that project, we had about $150,000 in grant funds left, so we bid out to do another segment of that project. Unfortunately, the low bidder was 350, and the next bidder was 675,000. So substantially out of the money. And we contacted both contractors, as well as the contractor that had done the original work. And they just said, the small amount of money, the small project size that we had left was not in their best interest to mobilize and come and do the work. So we do recommend that we reject all of the bids that were received. There were two bids received. But, you know, we're not about to leave grant money on the table. So what we can do is go back and do a materials-only bid to purchase the rock, and the city forces can install the rock in the same manner as was done by the contractor to start out. And I've worked, you know, confirmed with Greg and Bob that they would be able to do that within the timeframe left on the grant. So we wanted to bring that to your attention, because otherwise, if we say, Uncle, right now, you give back $150,000 to the state, you don't want to do that.
Never.
Yeah. You may ask my only question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to be able to do that? Okay, any other questions?
Rocks, the rocks that are already there?
Mm-hmm.
And now you're wanting to put more there?
On the north, going north, on the other side of 96, keep going north with the bigger rock riprap like we did. We have those.
Oh, you're working furniture.
Correct. Yes. We have that environmentally cleared all the way to the railroad trestle, and we've done clearing along there, but we want to keep going with that rock as much as we can, because it really is how life is. Good.
Can I get a motion to approve the reject the bids?
Approve.
Councilman Sample made a motion, second.
Approve.
Second by Councilman Holmes. Any further discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you again for accommodating us. Appreciate it.
Item number, we'll move to item number three. Item number three, consider for approval, reappoint city manager Gray Kelly to Southern Texas Groundwater Conservation District Board of Directors. Get a motion?
Approve.
Motion by Councilman Sample, second.
Approve.
Second by Councilman Barker. Any further discussion on this matter, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, presentation regarding delinquent tax collections from Ames Guest of Limebarger, Rogan, Blair and Sampson L.L.P.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll ask, Mr. Guest, is just please be mindful of the council's time and the people's time.
Yes, yes, Mayor, absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you. I would like to introduce my colleagues who are here, Mr. Kevin Dutton, who you know, who's a lead attorney in Jasper. I also have Mr. Wade Gent, who is a capital partner who came to support us tonight, was not expecting his arrival, but thank you for being here. Ms. Daniel Nettles, who's an attorney, she manages our Beaumont office. And then, of course, we have Ms. Michelle Wood, who is an area manager here in Jasper, and Ms. Sarah Ho, who's also our area manager here in Jasper. As you can see, we have a very large team. And I wanted to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present tonight. You could have voted on the one option on the agenda at the last meeting, but you conducted your due diligence by listening us tonight, and I just wanted to say thank you. There are five points I will be talking about tonight. One, a little bit of history of our firm and the city. Number two, I'd like to discuss a few of the points that my competitor had mentioned in his last presentation. I'd like to talk a little bit on point three, about our law firm and kind of who we are. Number four, our collection process. And number five, some data on collection statistics and performance. So first about our law firm. We represented the city about 11 years ago. At that time, we had an office manager who worked for our firm for about 20 years and jumped ship to our competitor. And the Purdue firm, this is a firm you terminated at the last meeting, and a lot of things were being said about our firm during that time. And during that vacuum, it created a vacuum, and our firm lost two-thirds of all the contracts here in the county. A third of it went to our competitor, a third of it went to the Purdue firm, and we retained a third of our business here. But I would like you to please keep an open mind about our presentation tonight. We are all with, came with the firm after this time, but our collections during that time were actually very, very good, which I will be showing you tonight. In response to that, to us losing two-thirds, my position was created 10 years ago. I was created as an attorney to assist the attorney in this area. I was given the orders to, the direction to restore the credibility and help our collections here. We also responded by opening a local office and hired Ms. Hope, who is also the area manager here, and our office is located, of course, at the County Annex Building. So moving on to point number two, I'd like to address a few of the statements made by my competitor. One, being that our firm has only recently started filing lawsuits in the city of Jasper this year because we are now interested in your business. I have been stopping by the city hall for the last 10 years. This is not a true statement. We, Mr. Biscamp, who was the former tax collector, had a longstanding rule that whoever led with the school district led in litigation. This is because when the three firms chopped up the business in Jasper to keep confusion down for the taxpayers and also for the tax office, the one who led the school district was the one who led in litigation. That rule was terminated this year when Mr., when the new tax collector was appointed, and he sunset that requirement, which then allowed us to be able to file our own lawsuits here. The second point I'd like to also address is the fact that my competitor would like you to think that filing of lawsuits means more collections and also their firm is doing the most work. This is also from the truth. Filing of lawsuits is the easiest in the litigation process. You need three things. You need a name, an address, and a delinquent count. That information is provided to us on every single account by the tax office. The technology is here. We can file a lawsuit on every single account on your delinquent tax roll, but there are several limiting factors as to why we do not do this. One being the cost is very hard on our taxpayers. You're looking at an average of $500 to $1,500 in court costs and fees added to the bill. These costs are passed to the delinquent taxpayer, and they are required to pay this to the district clerk's office and also other fees. It is less expensive for us to file a lawsuit than it is for us to mail a letter, because we have to pay for the postage and the letters. So I want you to know, it takes 15 minutes of my time to fill in the boxes to file a lawsuit. You file lawsuits to sell abandoned and unwanted properties. You use lawsuits as the last means necessary when you have people in a property and have wanted property. Again, there's a lot you can do to work with those individuals through community outreach. So again, you file lawsuits to sell real estate. The second process in litigation is our taking a judgment. This is when we go to court, and we have witnesses. It takes an average of a year and a half to obtain a judgment. We have to order title work. There's a lot of expenses that go into taking a judgment, a lot of manpower, technology. You have to locate defendants. You have to have them personally served. It takes, again, an average of a year and a half. This is the most difficult part. The third part of litigation is the tax sale. The tax sale is where we are able to help lower your tax base for your citizens and get those unwanted properties, those dilapidated buildings that are overgrown and back on the market, back on your paid tax roll. This will decrease your tax burden for your other citizens, because now you have more people paying into the system. So with that being said, I'm going to move to our presentation here. I want to go through these slides. I know time is very, I know that we have a lot to get through tonight, and I am, please feel free, if I'm moving too fast, to stop me and answer any questions. The presentation I put for you together, I wish we had it on the screen, but it's my understanding it was unavailable this evening.
Counsel, are you okay with that?
Okay. So.
Yes, sir, just trying to move along.
Yes, sir. So, and I'll be very brief about our law firm. We're a local law firm. We are, we have national resources. We're the largest in the country with what we do. We have invested over $100 million into our technology. And so this is resources that we bring to the city of Jasper. We have local offices here throughout East Texas to include Jasper, Lubkin, Livingston, Beaumont and Orange. I will skip through all of the different colleagues that I have here listed that you can read at your leisure. And again, I'm sorry, this presentation was listed in the very back. So what you have there is a proposal. If you look at the very back, there is another, that is the presentation. My apologies, I did not point that out. So this first page, yes, this is where we talk about our IT infrastructure. The proposal has a lot of helpful information about our collection statistics and also who we are as a firm, but I wanted you to have that, because it's impossible in 15 to 20 minutes to really cover all that we offer. So if you turn the page, you'll see the offices established across East Texas. This is just a small portion of who we, where we are in Texas. But we have, again, national resources across the entire United States. I work on a regional team, there are 60 employees, 13 attorneys, you've met a few of those here this evening. Again, if you turn the page, I will not go through all of the names of these attorneys and staff members. I think the last page that show Ms. Hope, Michelle Wood and Delaina Taylor, these are the most important of our P staff. They were really in the trenches. Michelle and Sarah live here, children go to school here, Jasper graduates. This is very important to have community members. I'd also like to point out the fact that we have all of our community support. Jasper Pro Rodeo, we give back to many, many programs here. And Mayor, I know you told me I have two more minutes, but I would.
We have just 10 minutes, and like I said, unless counsel's okay.
I would like to hear your presentation. Have a good job.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
No problem.
I think it's important, Mayor, to understand how we are giving back to the community, because as your representative, filing a lawsuit and creating more costs on our delinquent taxpayers is not the right strategy that represents the city well. It is giving back through community involvement. Again, I'm just going to list a few here. The Veterans Standout on Friday, we will be there with the main sponsor, Jasper Pro Rodeo, Jasper 4H, Deep East Texas Crime Stoppers, ADAC, Youth Rodeo. These are just to name a few of how we're giving back here locally. And this is how you gain the trust of the community to where, again, you can target through mailing and communication in order to increase your tax revenue. Briefly on the tax collection process, we receive those new accounts in July. We conduct an analysis of the roll, and we target accounts for mailing. Again, when our mailing is where we conduct and elicit the most response from the public. When those mailings do not work, we not receive the type of communication, and at the very last, we will file a lawsuit. Again, we are putting those abandoned unwanted properties back on the tax roll. Because of our size, we have analysts to do reject title, that's why we sell so many And so, and I will skip on to, our tax sales are online. We, again, have the sophistication. If you go to our website, you can see which properties are available to the citizens here in Jasper and across this region. Okay, let's get to the collection statistics. This is really the meaty part of the presentation. The county allowed me to use their collections to show you on graph format. Values over time go up, as we all know, values increase. If you look at county collections, it's a step up in our collection process. This year, we will surpass all prior years. This is what a healthy collection program looks like. Now, let's look at the city of Jasper. The last two years that we held this contract, in 2013 and 2014, 39% higher to what you have received in the last 10 years. Your collections have never been at where we were 11 and 12 years ago. 39% increase. Now, let's look at our competitor. Let's look at their collections. They took over Jasper ISD back in 2014. We have a 17% increase in our collections. This data comes directly from the tax office. I did not make this data up. This data is available to the general public. As you can see, our last five years is better than any of their five, best five years. If you look at their next other client, Yvadell ISD, 29% increase, over 10 years ago. And as you know, again, I'm going to reiterate how values have skyrocketed, especially in the last few years. And neither one of these firms has ever reached historical collections as we did over a decade ago. I want to move next to lawsuits filed. If you look, and my competitor used a timeframe of the last six years, so I'm using that timeframe the last six years. He's correct, they have filed more lawsuits. We started filing, got the key say, we filed 22, we actually filed 35 in this area this year. But if you look from a county-wide perspective, we have a third, my competitor here has a third, they filed three more lawsuits countywide, 345 to 342. Now, let's look at judgments. If we look at lawsuits filed, to judgments taken, our percentage is over 104%. Meanwhile, my competitor is at 44.6%. To put that in terms, for every 25 lawsuits we file, we're taking 26 judgments. For every 25 lawsuits my competitor files, they're taking 11 judgments. That's less than half. Again, we will reach over 100% because we're filing, we're working lawsuits that are older than this six-year timeframe. This is timeframe he selected, so this is timeframe again that we're utilizing. Now, let's turn the page to tax sales. For the last six years, we have maintained three sales a year. This year, we're actually having four. Our competitor has had one to two. In 2019, they had zero tax sales. If you look at properties sold as a percentage to lawsuits filed, for every 25 lawsuits we file, 32 properties sold, that's 126%. Our competitor here, 24% to lawsuits filed. So for every 25 suits filed, they sell six properties. This means that for every lawsuit they file, they're not taking to judgment, they're not taking it to a property sale, and it's adding fees to our citizens here in Jasper. Now, filing lawsuits, it works. You know, you take that heavy tool that you have and you get people's attention, but there are better ways of collecting the money that are working with the community. Next, I have your delinquent tax roll here. I have to request this data from the tax office. This is broken down by dollar amount. As you can see, the majority of your 848 delinquent accounts are in the $100 to $500 So filing a lawsuit on those is. So filing a lawsuit on those is egregious. We are adding $500 to $1,500. You have to target these individuals. You have to work with them. You file a lawsuit on these when you're going to sell those properties, again, that have been abandoned. You don't want heirs. Where heirs don't want the property. We have to locate all those heirs for these abandoned properties. I had a lawsuit recently that had 75 defendants. So it takes, again, it takes time, resources, and technology to get those properties back on their roll. So under your top 25 accounts, nine of those are deferred. Those are protected. Those are protected citizens. We want to make sure those individuals are able to stay in their homes. Community outreach is one way to help protect these vulnerable citizens. You're over 65 and you're disabled. It's the first question we ask when someone calls our office is, you know, that we want to make sure that they have the resources they needed. Two of these are your top 25 are reject title accounts. This is where you need our firm to work those accounts because we will send in the resources. None of those accounts are in suit. I do not have any details of those. But I'm assuming it's one of the other two law firms that have filed those. May have been one of the 30, 32 or so, 35 that we filed this year. And then five with judgment that have not been sold yet, but five of those have judgments. There was one other slide. We have been talking about delinquent taxes. I'm going to change. I'm going to shift just really quick. The city has been sitting on a gold mine for a very long time. I've been coming by to City Hall to share with them how we can collect this money at no cost to the city. And this is your municipal fees and fines. Judge Jackson allowed us to speak tonight to this. If you look on this page about the municipal fees and fines, you're talking millions of dollars for cities in this region. I promised Judge Jackson, he said he does not have a portfolio that size. So I don't know what your size is, and I can't tell you with any reasonable knowledge because I haven't seen that yet. But if you look at City of Center, almost 1.2 million resolved, collected almost 600,000. This is in the last seven years. City is a haul-up. 430,000 collected, almost 606 resolved, actually nothing. And this is available to the city. We bring... We locate these people using our technology, and we bring them to the city so they can resolve this with the judge. This is... We're not taking people to court. And I guarantee you, with 190, 69, 60... 96 and 63 coming through here, you have a lot in your portfolio that's outside of the county. So we're talking about people who come through here, speed, don't pay their tickets, and then no one, you know, it's difficult to find them. We will do that and bring them here. Also want to mention that when I started, when I was hired 10 years ago, my competitor represented all six JP Courts here. And it took seven years. One by one, they have all hired us. It was difficult for some of them because they have very good relationships with this firm. These are very good people here. But the truth is, they don't have the customer service. They're not here locally to help as we can. And they're also... The customer service and the collections and the technology that we have is just far superior. Here's a couple of the local clients here, Corrigan, Houston, Huntington, Lufkin. We have huge clients, Houston, San Antonio. We are ready and available for your business. And in closing, I'd just like to mention that consolidating with the county makes the most sense. This is the easiest on your tax base. This is the easiest on the tax office. You know, our office is located in the County Annex Building. We have two full-time staff there. It's open to the public. And so we really... We think that makes the most sense. The city already has an interlocal agreement with the county to collect your regular taxes. So why not use their preferred collector? That's our law firm. The second is our... Having the local office there is very convenient. My competitor talks about their local office. But I just want to point out that they pay zero property taxes here to the city, to the county, zero. So, you know, they want to demand others pay their taxes while they skip out on their own liability. So I think that's a very important point to make. And lastly, we have the ability to sell these properties. We have the history of doing that, and that's going to lower your tax burden on your citizens and be able to at some point hopefully lower those tax rates. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you work with citizens that want to stay in their home? That can't afford the taxes? Do you work with the citizens?
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, we cannot break the law, but we can definitely give people more time. And people deserve to have someone here that can talk to them over the phone and answer their questions. You know, we deal with the most vulnerable, the sick, people who have lost loved ones, people who have passed away. And so to be able... It is a huge honor for us to be able to talk to those people, talk to the citizens, and let them know what the remedies are. But yes, we're not selling people's... That is, again, the very last. But you want to get those abandoned properties back on their roll.
Thank you. Any other questions from counsel?
So when you talk about filing a lawsuit because it adds the amount of taxes to the customer, what do you mean by that?
Yes, sir. So the property tax code allows all of those fees to be added to the law... To the lawsuit. So we do not typically, as an attorney, you file a lawsuit, you have to pay fees upfront. We are... We do not have to do that. We have carved out a niche with the property tax code because we represent you as the sovereign. So we are not... We do not have to pay those fees. We add those to the judgment, and when we sell the property, then those fees will come out of the actual... When we sell the property, those fees that a buyer pays then goes to all of those. Or if the taxpayer wants to keep his property, then he has to pay that out of pocket. So if you file a lawsuit on somebody, and they want to enter into a payment agreement, they have to pay all those costs, 100% of them. And there are times where we... They will pay all the taxes except for the court costs. And then our competitor takes judgments on those. You know, it's called a court cost-only judgment. And that does happen. They're not the only ones to do that, but that does happen. But it is the tax code that gives us that ability to recover any type of fees, and even a title analyst. When we're putting those dilapidated buildings back on, oftentimes, we do not recover all of our fees because we'll have to sell it at a reduced rate and not recover at 100%.
You do recover some fees. You do recover some fees, but not at 100%.
That's right. Yes, sir, on some of those. And again, every situation is a little bit different. But that's why you do not file a lawsuit because it is such a heavy-handed tactic.
Were you saying you don't file a lawsuit?
Oh, we do. No, sir, we definitely file lawsuits, but the vast majority of those are the unwanted abandoned properties. Those are the ones nobody wants. And again, we have the system set up. This is why we're the largest in the nation. This is why our average client has been with us over 30 years is because we don't just file lawsuits and beef up our numbers. We do the work because we have the system in place to do that. And it all starts with the community and having people here locally. That's how you have a successful collection program.
More questions? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation regarding the delinquent property tax collection from Keith Tredway of McCreary, Vesselka, Rag, and Allen, D.C.
Okay.
So I will not take very much of your time.
I presented last time. I do not necessarily feel the need to repeat myself on a whole bunch of stuff.
Thank you.
So what I'm showing you is, basically, it is simply the results. That, you know, we talked a lot about process. We've talked a lot about all of the above. But the end result is that what y'all actually have to do is make budget. And that's what... And that's what we do. One of the things he talked about was that, you know, basically, the delinquent amounts have gone down for Jasper ISD versus what had happened back in 2013. And the end result is that the delinquent balance for Jasper ISD, despite the exploding property values, is about 1.5 million less than it was when we took over. And so there is significantly less delinquent today than there was when we took over. So no, you're not going to get the same amount in regards to delinquency because we cleaned it up. The, you know, as much as he talks about the heavy-handed tactics and the number of suits we file, and, you know, he's not wrong. I mean, the reality is, is we do file a lot of suits. The reason we file a lot of suits is because of the fact that y'all have budgets to meet, and that's how we meet budgets. If you look at the results and these numbers that you'll see, they're on the left, where it's Jasper ISD, Evidell ISD for the past three years. Those numbers are not calculated by me. Those are calculated by the tax office. They were reported to each entity, and that is basically through the end of October for each year.
That comes from the county?
That comes from the county. I did not calculate this. And so I... End result is you can make stats through almost anything. And so what I wanted was numbers that y'all could actually trust, which meant that it didn't come from me, it didn't come from LimeBarker, it didn't come from Purdue. And so one of the things that you will see is that over the course of the past 10 years, we did do the vast majority of the work in this area. And so when he talks about, you know, we don't file as many suits. We only file them dilapidated. The end result is that as Purdue's work fell off in 2020, that y'all's collections, which are at the very bottom, were 99.21% in 2021-22, 100.48%, and then it's 103.09%. During that same time, the city of Kirbyville, where Kirbyville ISD is represented by Purdue, and their work fell off in a relatively similar fashion. So for the 2021-22 year, their collections were 100.05. And so they had some lingering effect from the work that Purdue had done to that point. Starting in 2022 to 2023, the number went down to 98.97. This past year, for 2023 to 2024, their number is down to 97.57. And so they have had a 3% decrease in the city of Kirbyville because of the fact that Purdue has not been working... Did not work Kirbyville ISD anymore than it worked the city of Jasper. The other side effect, though, is that LimeBarker didn't pick up the slack. They have 30% of every bill that they did not pick up the slack during that time. That because of the fact that we've been working for Jasper ISD, because we did file those suits, because we do work those accounts, the end result is the city of Jasper has not suffered in the same manner despite the fact that Purdue only filed a single suit during that time. And so y'all's numbers have continued to increase and continue to be good, whereas Kirbyville's have failed because of the fact that we worked it. And so as much as they talk about, you know, we send letters, we do this, because those letters, those are captain letters. They're going to the people in Kirbyville. If the collections worked from just those letters, Kirbyville's numbers wouldn't be going down, but they are. And so the end result is, yes, I do file a lot of suits. And where he talked about, basically, the number that I sold is a bad thing, the end result is I don't consider the number of properties that I sell to be a bad thing in terms of it being a lower percentage. Because what that means is that I'm actually serving the people who own that property. I'm getting citations to them. I'm not just citing everybody by posting and pretending that everybody's dead. I'm getting it to every heir. I'm getting it to the owners. And so the end result is that we do set up payment plans. We do work those properties out. And so the end result is that we're not selling everything we sell because we are working with them. And so where we do have the office in the appraisal district, where they can come by and they do set up those deals, the end result is they're working with us all the time on all of those things. And so it's not just this blind hammer. Because if it was a blind hammer, we wouldn't have the results, would you? The other side of it is that because we have done this work, that's why we have the relationship with code enforcement. And that is what y'all are actually missing. The y'all's actual collections are pretty good because we represent Jasper ISD, and we've been doing our job. But what y'all are missing is the extra code enforcement. It's the extra mowing liens. It's the money that y'all are sending out the door to pay for all of that stuff. We're the ones that have the relationship with code enforcement because we're the one that's done all of this work inside the city of Jasper over the past 10 years. And so we're the logical choice for the city of Jasper. And I will make one final point. He is right in regard to fines and fees. That, to my knowledge, y'all do not have a collector. Y'all probably are leaving money on the table. But I would recommend that you work with the city magistrate to determine that and what y'all want to do. That is not something... The city magistrate has to work with whatever third-party vendor comes in. I would just work with them, and whatever... If they're comfortable with us, that's great, we do it. If they're comfortable with them, that's great. I'll be honest, whatever's best, it really is... I'm not going to try and sell you on something that doesn't make sense for you. If this makes sense, because we can do the best job for you. And so without looking at the city of Jasper, without actually talking to your city magistrate, I can't tell you whether it was best for you or whether LimeBarker was best for you. I don't know. And I'm not going to tell you. For this, we're the best option. Because what y'all are missing is your mowing liens and all of those extra things. And we will collect those during our suit process. And by the way, the only way to collect those things is in a lawsuit.
And that's what you're saying on that is, you know, like, you've been working with our code enforcement as far as the collections? Because I notice I'm around the city, and I see the signs in the yard.
Yes.
Those are the things that you're talking about as far as things that, like Derek, what we have to take care of? That the city has to absorb that cost for it, and you help the city recover that cost.
Correct. And because of the fact that I haven't represented you, I couldn't include your city liens inside my lawsuit. Purdue had to do that. The other side is, is that because I didn't represent you, Derek couldn't point me specifically at properties that were owed a significant amount of mowing liens. Because once again, you know, if you only look at the taxes, you may have an account that only has $500 due, and we wouldn't file a lawsuit on that. On the other hand, if it has $2,500 in mowing liens to y'all, then we're going to file a lawsuit because we're trying to collect the $2,500. The $500 is just the extra. But what we're actually trying to get is the $2,500. We haven't been able to do that because we've represented the school district, not the city. And so in order to do that, we need to represent you. Any other questions?
Can I ask the same question? Do you work with citizens who want to stay in their home? Who will these back taxes?
Yes, we do. We have a massive list that we constantly keep up to date about the payment plans that we have. End result is that if people are willing to try, we are willing to work with them. The... And so end result is that in terms of the number of actual homes that I sell that are not... We're not talking rental houses. We're talking actually like homesteads. I've probably sold 10, less than 10 in my entire career. And I've been doing this for 13 years. And so the end result is that I will give every opportunity to somebody that it's their home because, once again, I also represent the school district. That means that they have kids that are in school. Schools get more funding from attendance most of the time than they do from delinquent tax collections. It makes absolutely no sense for me to sell someone's home, cost a kid a home that then goes to a different district that costs my client more money than I possibly could have collected in delinquent taxes. And so the end result is that, yes, if it's a home, we work with them and every way we can.
Any other questions, counsel?
I have a question. The way that they... Basically, they got all that stuff they do, the local people still here?
Yes.
All y'all answer pretty much the same. What do y'all do to, like, support the local state?
Okay. So basically, what we have done in the past is we have sponsored the rodeo. We had a little deal out there for a couple of years out there. We also, every year, we give to the Jasper ISD Education Foundation, the Evidell Education Foundation. A couple of months ago, I paid for Evidell, their basketball team. They had a special tournament. I paid for that trip for them to go take it. The bulk of my stuff is directly tied to the schools because of the fact that, A, that's who I represent. But also, I want to be perfectly honest, wherever I'm at, whether it's... Whether I represent everybody or not, I have a tendency to give money towards kids. Whether it's adoptions, whether it's education foundations, whether it's groups that give them scholarships. I'll be honest, if I'm the attorney that's in... I'll be honest, if I'm the attorney that's in charge, that has a tendency to be where I have a tendency to give them. That's just.
That's all you've done in basketball, just to get them to go to school?
For the most part, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council members? Okay. Everybody good? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Keith? Item number six. Says, consider for approval appointment of attorney for delinquent tax, property tax collections Tuesday or B. Item A is resolution to approve contract for collection of legal taxes and legal representation between the city of Jasper and McCreary, Vassalka, Rag and Allen in D.C., MBBA. Public notice on this agenda as required by section two, two five four point one zero three six of the Texas Government Code. B, an agreement with law firm of LimeBarker, Rogan, Blair and Sampson LLP as special counsel to perform all legal services necessary to collect delinquent taxes and authorize, authorizing the execution of such agreement as set out in the notice of the public meeting. Counsel, vote on this. Motion on this now?
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion by counsel on samples, second?
Well, I don't know what.
Would you like to second, with the sample?
To vote on this now? Yes, I would second.
Okay. Ms. McCroskey, any further discussion on this?
What is the motion?
The motion is to choose A or B.
Okay. And what was the motion?
Is that what, was that the motion that you made, counsel inside?
Tuesday?
No, you have to make a motion to choose A or B. And then, oh, you made a, I'm sorry, I apologize. You made a motion to choose A. You have counsel on sample made a motion to choose A. You second?
I don't, I don't second A, no.
I don't second A either.
No.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by counsel on Hildebrand. All in favor of A, say aye.
Aye.
Two. We have two. Counsel on Hildebrand said aye for A. Counsel on sample, you said aye for A?
Yes.
Okay. So we have two for, uh, two no's, I mean, two ayes for A. All I heard was two no's. Counselman Barber?
Why are you voting?
Can I vote? You're a no? Okay. So we have three no's. That means it does not pass. Okay, uh, councilman.
I'll make a motion to B.
Okay.
I'll second.
Hold on.
My second, hold on, hold on.
Didn't option A end in a tie?
No, no, no. It was three. He voted. Counselman Barber voted.
Oh, no, he voted, no. I thought he said he not voted. Okay.
Now, counsel on sample. Counselman Holmes would like to amend your motion. He'd like to make a motion for B. Do you allow him to do? Okay. Counsel on sample, I mean, I'm sorry, counsel on Holmes made a motion for B. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by counsel on McCroskey. All in favor. Any further discussion on, on B? Okay. Can we have a vote? All in favor of B, say aye.
Aye.
Did I hear three ayes?
Aye.
Okay, we have counsel on Barber, Holmes and McCroskey. Aye for B. Got any no's?
No.
Counsel on Holmes. Okay, we have two no's. We had, it passed. B. B has been selected. LimeBarker, Rogan, Blair and Sampson. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, item number seven. Consider for approval ordinance number eleven dash twelve dash twenty-four. Update and amend chapter eight, elections, section eight, seven C. Was that you? Was that Ray? Oh, Liz. What is this, Liz? Yeah, could you go to the mic, please? So we can hear you, so we can hear you. Thanks.
So the election pay rate hasn't been changed since twenty, for the workers, hasn't been changed or updated since twenty-ten at nine dollars.
You said the rates?
Their pay rate.
Their pay rate, yes. Um, it hasn't been updated since two thousand and ten at nine dollars an hour. They work over twelve-hour shift and that day is a long day. Uh, we feel like fifteen dollars an hour is reasonable and understanding. It's one day. Um, early voting as well for that timeframe, so we just feel like, uh, being since twenty-ten till now, we think they deserve a pay raise in that.
Thank you, Liz. Counsel, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from counsel on Holmes to approve, approved. Counsel on Barber second. Any further discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight. Consider for approval, no fishing in ponds during the week of January thirteenth through seventeenth for the annual trout derby on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'd make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by counsel on sample, second?
Second.
Second by counsel on Hildebrand. Any further discussion on this matter?
Who's going to police that?
The police.
The fishing police?
The police will police that. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, consider for approval, two thousand and twenty-four tax rule resolution. A motion by counsel on Holmes.
I'll second.
Second by counsel on McCroskey, council member McCroskey. Any further discussion on this matter? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider for approval, discuss and if appropriate authorize submission of scope of work, items and search bids regarding the previously approved forensic audit. The scope of work will be submitted exclusively to the four firms who have answered the request for proposal as published by the city of Jasper and as received by the city council on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Make a motion to approve. Motion by counsel on Holmes.
Second.
Second by counsel on Hildebrand. Any further discussion on this matter? Motion passed. Oh, can we get, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any no's? Motion passes unanimously. We have now is, we have, we have an item here given to the, to the agenda of public notice.
Well, we're supposed to discuss this.
Well, we, we could have. Let's back up in the scope before.
Yeah.
Just, I think real simply, I think we just, we can, we are authorized to submit our ideas to, I would say to, to Ms. Gerald, and she can forward it to the necessary folks to get the request for the bid of this project.
You mean like what you're specifically looking for in your audit?
Yes.
Was have this, the city, the territory do that.
Submit it to Ms. Gerald in written form and let it process through the proper hands.
Okay.
Well, if I can make a recommendation of when, I don't want it to be like lost in the shuffle because it's very important what we're asking for them to do. You don't feel that this would warrant a meeting where all the council could get together and talk about what scope they would like? What, you know, the things that we would like to look for, since we haven't met and talked about what we would, we would want this job to be.
I think it's very important, but you know, we've been waiting for months. I'm ready to just move.
Oh, and I am too, of course, but I, I'm just saying, I don't. I think it deserves, it's on focus and it's on meeting. I think it's very important. Do you guys feel like that it needs its own meeting or, or do you feel?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Ask counsel if they.
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Okay, counsel, is that what, that's what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that instead of, you know, we want.
Well, I would like to make a motion.
Would you like to make a motion to amend, amend that motion?
We didn't have a motion. So there's nothing to.
Oh, no, I just read the item, so we did not have a motion. Okay, so we'll move on beyond that until you, you get your.
Well, I, I just want to make sure there is a meeting because, because I've had some difficulty with special call meetings. And so I'd like to go ahead and make a, make a motion if, if that's when I need to do it, it's now.
No, ma'am, you do not need to make a motion. All you need to do is just make, call a special call meeting to have this meeting. Or you can have it in a workshop setting instead of a special call meeting, since that's what you want to do. You want for everybody to be involved in it, correct?
Yes, yes. And I want to be allowed to call a special meeting. That's why I said if I need to make a motion now, for the special meeting.
You can do that, but basically since you're trying to get everybody, but if that's what you want to do, that's fine.
Well, just my special meetings have been denied multiple times, so I want to make sure.
Okay, next, next item. So what we're going to do is you can call your meeting, call a workshop, whatever you'd like to do. Just make sure all of the council, just do not have to make a motion. Okay, next we have on the agenda, a, an agenda to public notice. Regular city council meeting, Tuesday, November twelfth, city of Jasper, Jasper City Hall, four sixty-five South Main Street. Item considered for approval, resolution for fiscal year twenty-five, SB two-two-four, catalytic converter grant program. This agenda, this is posted as required under government code of section five-five-one point zero four-one. Can I get a, motion to, uh?
I move we approve.
Okay, have a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second. I don't know what he.
Uh, Grant?
I want Cody, Cody, I want to speak.
Oh, Cody?
Yeah, this is where the police department's camera system. Counsel, what this is, we brought to y'all some time ago about the flock camera system and how we're going to get the, the free trial, try it out, and if it works for us, then we're going to try to proceed forward with the money. I'm going to let Detective Sergeant Christopher explain to you. He's been in the process of looking for grants. He's found a grant that will pay for this thing a hundred percent. So I'm going to let him explain that to y'all.
So I recently learned about this grant, this grant through the Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority. It includes vehicle thefts, catalytic converter thefts, precious metal thefts and things like that. So I applied for this grant. It was short notice. Uh, this grant is designed for programs like this, for task force, for bait cars, but it does include automatic license plate readers. The deadline for that grant was today at five o'clock, but I got an extension through y'all to review this resolution. Instead of calling a specially called meeting, I just let it fall on this meeting and got approval through the grant to, to, to extend it. And it is an eighty percent grant. Uh, we would be responsible for twenty percent. So after the trial program, we chose to move forward with this flock program for these automatic license plate readers. It would cover eighty percent of the full cost.
So you don't have to come with anything upfront from the beginning?
It's a reimbursement of, we would pay, if we would pay it, they would reimburse eighty percent. We would only be responsible for twenty. Uh, I know that, uh, that Jedco was, was said that they would want to be involved, so we would maybe split the twenty percent or look at other options if it came to that point. And it's basically just a resolution saying that we will do what we're responsible to do for this grant. Turn in statistical reports showing how we've used this money for the license plate readers and things like that.
What advantage is that for the city of Jasper?
The grant?
Was this, no, no, this program.
So the automatic license plate reader program would be beneficial to any type of investigation. Uh, it, it gives you the ability to search for known vehicles, possibly known vehicles in any crime that occurs, including crimes for this, and this is why those are included in the grant process.
Counsel, you have any questions?
Does this cover someone who comes into my backyard and hauls off all my junk metal and iron and precious?
It, it would if you had a description.
If I got the license plate.
Even if you don't get the license plate, this flock safety program has a vehicle fingerprint recognition system based on, if you think it was a Ford, we can just search for Fords that match that color, things like that. But yes, absolutely, it would benefit you in that case to identify that vehicle and see where it's traveling and moving throughout the city.
Good deal.
Any other questions from council? Okay, can we get a motion to approve?
We have a motion now, second.
I motion.
Marcus, second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to pass and announce. At this time, it is seven oh five. City council members, uh, being present, will enter into closed executive session pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code five-five-one zero seven four. Pursuant to personnel matters, police chief candidates will also be in for pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one dash zero seven one, consultation with, with attorney, legal discussion with legal counsel regarding city council and Jedco matters. Time is now seven oh five. We resign into executive session.